I'll be ready. Good afternoon, I'd now like to call a Wednesday, September twentieth, meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to order. Two P M. On Wednesday, March twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Governor Healy signed into law chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three. An act making appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Which includes a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings. By suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, chapter thirty A, section twenty. That action was effective immediately extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Please stand and join me in saluting your flag.
My pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Call the role Commissioner Stady?
I'm present, sir.
Commissioner Collins?
Present.
Commissioner Shea is here, we have a full board. We have no executive session today, number three is, I know, number four minutes, the open session meeting of September thirteenth for approval.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? It is a vote. Number five minutes, the open session meeting of September sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, for approval, I believe is slated.
They'll be corrected, they'll find a mate, Peter?
Second.
Okay.
Or as corrected?
Yep.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of the executive session meeting of six, September sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, for approval, not to be released at this time.
Motion made?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. We have no appointments today. Number. Number eight, public comment, each week. We have a public comment session to allow anyone to come in in person and make any, make comments. All people to zoom in with us and have public comment. Director Cronin, have you got anybody contacted you for public comment?
No, sir.
Anyone out in Zoom land, as I like to say, has public comment today? Last call for public comment. We have no public comment for today, thank you very much. Next, personnel matters, I'm gonna, I'm sorry, next is all business, they have none, number nine is personnel matters. We have several at the school and at the Walson Recreation Facility.
I'll try to group Mr. Chairman and make it a little bit easier, but the first one is just a simple change of address. So, motion to approve the notice of change of address for Adalina Aravalo, student summer camp worker. And there's also a notice of pay increase as well, and that's effective nine twenty-one twenty-three, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? It is a vote, the next are all increases?
Well.
Oh, no, they're in designations, all right, anywhere you want, Commissioner.
I'll go with the next group are all notice of hourly increases, there are three on the first group. The first is to Elena Hobbs of Westwood, Broughton, the next is Allison Palmer of Franklin, the third is Emily Perron of Millis. They're all for student workers or student labor in some capacity. Man, Elena Hobbs is nine twenty-one, Allison Palmer is nine twenty-one, Emily Perron, the effective date was six eight, I'll move that as one group.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote, next.
All right, we have a lot of resignations, I believe. The rest are resignations, I'll move the following, if that's all right? Is that all right?
Yes.
All right, move the most, motion made to accept the notice of resignation for the following individuals. Emma Conway, as a student worker, effective nine eleven twenty-three. Jennifer Aldridge of Watertown, Jennifer Conway was Waymouth, by the way. Jennifer Aldridge from Watertown, student worker, effective nine eleven twenty-three, they're all nine eleven. Resignation of Jake Collinow of Dedham. Resident motion made for Nolan Doyle of Dedham, Evan McClellan of Walpole. Lila Tillinghouse of Walpole, Elise Ware of Auburndale, Mass. Jessica White of Waymouth, Pamela Carpenter of, let me stop right there, I'm gonna stop right there, well, Jessica White. So that group, Mr. Chairman, from Emily, let me see. Emma Conway down to Jessica White, they're all student labor or student workers. And they all have the effective date of resignation, nine eleven twenty-three, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on all these student resignations, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
The next three are notice of resignation for substitute instructor. Have to assume maybe they got a job, but anyway.
Actually, actually, the next seven.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that, thank you. All right, so these are all notice of resignation, are they all substitute instructors?
Yes.
Okay, what happened? Who's gonna be something at the school? They're all, these are all resignations?
Right.
Okay, so I'll move approval of the following, Pamela Carpenter from Norwood as a substitute instructor. They're all effective nine eleven, David DeVoe of Norwood, Sabina Gill of Braintree. Haley Maziaras of Walpole, I did the best I could, Christine McClella Edgely of Rantham. Michael O'Neil of Walpole, and Nicholas Viola of Rantham, and Brian Rusak of Belmont. These were all for substitute instructors, and they're all resigning and, for whatever reason, it's effective date nine eleven twenty-three, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on resignation of substitute teachers, all in favor? Aye. It is a vote. Three more at the Walson Recreation.
Walson Recreation Facility, move approval of the notice of appointment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wait.
Go ahead.
Okay, actually, there's three, so another appointment for the following individuals, Christine L. Eli of Brockton. And a pro shop attendant, effective date nine twenty-one twenty-three, as the rate stated. Noticeful appointment for Brainden Kennedy of Milton, a pro shop attendant, at the rate stated, nine twenty-one twenty-three. And the third one is Matthew McDonald, grounds crew, at the rate stated, effective date nine twenty-one twenty-three, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on appointments at the Walson Recreation Facility, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Payroll and expense warrants for approval, pay, number eleven on our agenda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if you want, so warrant list for nine twenty twenty-three, I'll move the following. Payroll for the county, twenty-four dash eleven, the amount of one hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred sixty-nine dollars forty cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote, next.
Payroll of the school, dash twenty-four dash eleven, parentheses, six, the amount of three hundred sixty-two thousand, eight hundred fourteen dollars, thirty-two cents, so moved.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
Move approval for the expenses of the county of oh nine oh three twenty-four, the total amount of eighty-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars, ninety-three cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote, next.
At the Walson Recreation Facility, President's Ladies Association, twenty-four dash twelve twenty, move the amount seven hundred fifty-nine dollars, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye, and the last one, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Move U.S. Bank debt and interest, twenty-four dash four, the amount of two hundred forty-eight thousand, seven hundred sixty-five dollars, sixty-three cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
That concludes the warrant, sir. Payroll and warrant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number twelve, report on American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, Director Cronin.
Thank you, good afternoon, Commissioner, two items to your information. We have one application in a portal, I'll try to approve it before the end of the day, it is for the town of Canton, hundred forty thousand dollars. I'll review it, and if it passes muster, it should be before you, as really is, next week. And also, we received notice today that the town of Walpole is returning in aggregate about two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds that have been previously awarded to the town of Walpole. These were values that exceeded the use, in other words, its surplus. We'll take that money and put it back into their designated allotment for redistribution of re-award it down the road. That information has been forwarded along to our auditors for tracking as well. And then also, Mr. Buckley sat in on the Clark County ARPA quarterly meeting yesterday with Clement Bristol, Hartstable and Duce. Kate Allen, excuse me. And nothing new there, I believe they were going to have a conversation with their respective commissioners to see if we could move that meeting scheduled for Martha's Vineyard. To a more favorable timeframe, so more on that later. All right, that's all I have.
Can I ask a quick question, Mr. Chairman?
I have one too, go ahead, Commissioner.
What's the Canton one for?
I definitely picked closely out a commissioner, I'll look at it shortly. I saw it pop up and I flagged it, but I will look at it after.
No, fine, thank you, sir.
Town of Walpole put in, and then?
I believe there were a total of four grants, in this case, that they got, they received money for, but they needed less than the county's award. This is surplus funds at the right county.
So they're very much aware that they can re, repackage that?
Yes, I spoke to the finance director last week, Jody Cunio.
Yep.
Well, we want to be sure they know they can repackage it, of course, we could help them repackage it, maybe put it somewhere else.
Oh, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, I mean, I don't know, it's the first, I don't want.
I haven't really talked about it.
No, because I think it's the first.
It's all new.
You've done that before already, you've done that for Norwood.
So does it go back to like Norwood's allotment, or does it go to the whole, you know, enchilada?
No, goes back to Norwood's allotment, in that case.
And so does the Walpole one?
Yep.
What if, just say hypothetically, say a Norwood or a Walpole or a Canton didn't put it in for anything else, could we then re-electe it, couldn't we?
Well, if we want to. That's, that is the point that we're gonna be tackling after the new year, when we start to look at what has been awarded but unspent, and what is the community's bandwidth to getting to the expenditure level? Do they expect to get it done before December of two thousand and twenty-four or not? Furthermore, if they haven't received funds, if they haven't applied for or received the same test, we're gonna be putting them through the. The test to find out if they're in a position to utilize the allocated funds before the grant period obligation ends, so that is happening in the spring.
And now that they don't trust you, you do an incredible job, but, Mr. Chairman, could I suggest, just to make sure we're safely get maybe an opinion from our council on that, the Mins eleven, that's our council on the ARPA? That could maybe just even say in writing, in the event a town does not use to share, here's what happens, just to make sure we're covered.
So there, absolutely, we'll certainly look at that, there is an important factor, it's actually playing out right now. Every community signed a grant agreement that was drafted by Mins.
Okay.
Those agreements end June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Twenty-four, right.
And it was designed to give the county the breathing room to evaluate what available funds are still out there that have either been unspent or unobligated or unawarded for this purpose, so we're gonna lean into that whole exercise in the spring as the grant agreements end to determine who's in need, and where do the commissioners want to funnel the money that in some event will be unavailable, unused by the communities. So that's a whole different exercise that we've been planning and talking about for quite a while, so, but for sure, when we get there, it'll all be about will, will Mins be drafting new contracts, Commissioner, that will take us to the end of December, or is it a case-by-case basis?
Interesting.
Remains to be seen. A lot of it depends on really, how much money's left. You, you know you're in the ninety million dollar phase right now for awarded. We don't have a grip yet on how much is unspent, because, you know, what we do, because we have quarter of the reports and so forth, but we still have about forty million dollars to award. And so by the next, by next spring, we're really gonna have to tackle, what does this number look like? Is it more than ten million or so, or is it a small amount of money? And it'll make the exercise a little bit more tolerable. We'll see.
Thank you, sir.
Any other matters about ARPA?
No, sir.
Today's meeting? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Number thirteen, electric vehicle station grant application. Commissioner, Director Cronin.
Thank you, Commissioner, so the commissioners may have received in a packet a link to the Massachusetts Electric Vehicle Charging Rebate Application Portal. Sponsored by the Department of Environmental Protection, I think I've informed the commissioners that we've met with an agent that works directly for the, the two large utility companies, Eversource and National Grid, to coordinate community application into this grant program. When our electrician, Charles Cushion, and I met with Brian Laughlin from this entity, and he has provided a brief application that's partially filled out. The, the requirement is, we're gonna need approval to endorse the host, the agreement that will bind the county towards this program, in this case with NSTAR. So if the county commissioners are inclined, we'll just be looking for a motion to direct me to endorse the grant applications for this program site by site. By the way, here are the documents, if anybody has any questions.
I noticed this agreement is with NSTAR.
Right, there'll be two eventually, one with NSTAR, one with.
I, I don't know where the line is, but I know Dedham, Walpole, we've dealt with Eversource, and I know in Quincy, it's probably NSTAR, but I just wanna.
I don't know about, we're not doing any work in Quincy at this time.
No, but I mean.
NSTAR is.
Yeah, where's NSTAR?
Because Canton. No, Stoughton.
No, I'm Eversource in Canton.
Stoughton and Rantham are National Grid.
Okay.
Eversource is Dedham.
And Walpole, as a matter of fact, Eversource, yeah, it's in, on Walpole, one A. I know, I know, and we had some dealings at the school, and it's positive, and I, I know some, we know the folks there, but.
So this agreement, to summarize this too, we're gonna agree with the motion to enter into this with NSTAR?
In this case, NSTAR, there'll be another one for Eversource down the road.
And there's no cost on us, right?
Nope.
Grant letter?
Nope.
And we, do we know what site we're gonna go with first, we don't know yet?
Dedham, right behind the registry deeds.
Dedham, all right, okay, I was excited.
I think it's exciting, I mean. You know, the registry deeds building and all of our buildings mean so much to downtown Dedham, we wanna share the parking space, and, and I mean, it's not gonna be always court business, but.
Is this gonna be the kind where they have a canopy with solar to generate for the power?
No.
Just a regular meter?
It's gonna draw from our, our electrical source at the buildings.
At the building? And then, how do we end up making money on that, what do we make money?
Every, every station will have an app, that'll be available through your phone. You'll be able to access the electrical draw by opening the app, it'll charge you by the kilowatt hour, a certain fee, the county sets the fee.
Okay.
So it may be different from site to site, depending upon how much we pay, and the commissioners will have to determine if that fee is a break-even, or if we want to incentivize others maybe go a little bit below market, or perhaps even add something to make money, but all costs will be borne by the consumer, and we haven't gotten that far yet.
So looking ahead, it's good to look ahead, in our budget, we may wanna even increase the amount for our utility bill, right? My money, because there's gonna be a draw?
Yes.
It'll be.
When it comes, yeah, we're still, we're gonna start with one location, and I spoke with the representative when he came before us. If we got a green light today, we're about two to three months away.
Okay.
So we're gonna be well into FY twenty-four, but by the time FY twenty-five is planned, we'll have a good idea of what that draw looks like, and how popular they are.
You have a couple done by Christmas around there, on holiday times?
It could be, by the end, yeah, if everything goes well.
All right.
A lot of it is the demand of the market, he's, they're very active.
Good.
Yep.
How do we ensure that we have sign-off on the design of it, I would like to see them before, you know? I.e., we put, we put the crossing thing in front of the registry, I think with the workstation in. You know, it wasn't too pleasant, it wasn't too tightly sewn.
We can make arrangements that whenever concept is finalized with commissioners.
I just wanted to keep on top of it, that's all.
Yes, I, I, I agree.
I think it's a great idea, I'm for it.
The, John McGowan had given a mock-up of where he would prefer the stations to be located.
Okay, that's exactly the type of stuff I'm talking about.
And I'd asked him to identify his preference, now, his preference may be different from what the electric company would otherwise recommend, because it needs to be close towards the metered entrance of the electricity into the building, because you're gonna be tapping onto that. I know, for example, down in Rantham, the preferred location is not where John wanted, it's on the other side of the building, it's on the right side of the building, where they prefer to put it. In Dedham, he isolated a couple of areas towards the very back of the registry. One all the way to the end, near Court Street, or, sorry, not Court Street. Near Aim Street, and the other one closer to Old River Place. That was his preference, we'll have to go by what the electric company recommends, and I'll bring those renderings to you before any decisions are made.
Want a motion?
Any, I want a motion, sure.
Unless you have any more questions.
Yeah, any more questions on?
So move that the county, our county commissioners enter into a site-host agreement, as of this day, effective date, I'll go with this, say, two thousand and twenty-two, you might wanna check that.
That has to.
You know, between NSTAR Electric Company, doing business as Eversource Energy, Massachusetts Corporation Electric Company, we'd address the two forty-seven Station Drive, Westwood. And it would be with the, I believe, the county commissioners, and it's outlined, this agreement proposed and submitted and reviewed by our county director. So moved.
And endorsed if you all sign the agreement on your behalf.
Okay, and so, the motion will also authorize the county director to endorse this agreement for us.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, thank you.
Yep, thank you, you're welcome.
Do we have any ANI ARPA warrants today for approval?
No, sir.
No ARPA warrants. We have a bid opening at, I mean, do we have any bid openings today, or just a contract award?
Just contract award.
Okay, we're gonna go by fifteen and go to sixteen, we have a contract award, tentative award for the exterior painting and association work, associated work at Dedham, Rantham District Court, good afternoon, Nancy.
Good afternoon, it's recommended that a contract be awarded to Catco Contracting. They were lowest qualified bidder in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Echo?
Catco, K-A-T-C-O.
Okay, have you done business with them before?
They actually just did the gym at the agricultural high school.
Good to know, how did, how did the gym come out, Jack, John?
Pete Murphy's very pleased with the work they did.
Okay, okay, that's, and we've done all our other due diligence?
Yes.
Commissioners, what do you think, we're gonna get this done before the snow flies?
That's fine, it's just, I remember the bids, I remember that, they were all over the place.
Yeah.
There was one like seventy thousand, right?
Yeah.
And it's lowest happy, you feel confident?
Yes.
They can do the work? Okay?
There was another one.
I mean, based on prior experience, that's all I meant.
Yeah.
Because the bids were crazy.
The next bid up was forty-four thousand.
Right. But dude, I thought it was, my notes said it was one hundred and seventy.
They were all over the place.
Geez.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll move approval of the contract for exterior painting and associated work for Rantham Court for?
Catco Contracting.
Catco Contract.
Second.
Catco Contracting.
For the amount, that's just.
Thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
John, as an aside, we're just awarding a contract at the Rantham Court for Catco. And Catco recently did the painting of your gym, and Pete Murphy was happy?
Yes.
And we checked it out.
Yeah, we were satisfied as an organization.
Okay, well, they were, they were the lowest responsible bidder, anyway, we wanna get it done before the snow flies, so we voted for Catco. And where are they from, Nancy?
Yep, they're from Blackstone, yep, just there, and then these two here.
In the county. A lot of kids from Blackstone in this school, they're hardly speaking, yeah, that's good. Okay, next. Seventeen, report of the county director.
Thank you, Commissioner Shea. Wanted to announce that the resignation of Tony Aiken a week or so ago, as our fiscal specialist, we've secured the services of Alec Moreno, he's a temp, a recent Eisenberg graduate from UMass as business major, and he'll be working with Nancy over the next several weeks in that role, so we're grateful to have Alec on board, to fill that critical role. So, just wanted to read a brief message that came in on Tuesday, I poured this over to Mr. McGowan and his staff. It comes from the director of the trial course facilities management and capital planning. He wrote to me, John, I wanted to extend a word of appreciation, I stopped by the Stoughton District Court this morning and met with the clerk. Then quickly toured the courthouse, your staff is doing a good job, the clerk is extremely happy with the counter work they just finished for her. With many thanks, Charles O'Brien, so staff at Stoughton District Court should be recognized for the good work they're doing down there to keep that place in good shape in. Whoever worked on the counter to be recognized for the clerk's appreciation is the same, so pass that along to our friends in facilities. Want to remind, I believe that county commissioners have a meeting this evening as trustees of the school, it's scheduled for four forty-five?
Yeah, yes, sir. Dinner four forty-five, media section, in the cafeteria.
And just a note, I'll be going on vacation, effective tomorrow, and returning on October fourth, which is a Wednesday. Well, during that time period, Mr. Buckley will be handling county administrative matters, Michelle will be obviously handling the H R matters going forward as well, so. That is all I have this afternoon, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Any other questions, Director Cronin?
Two, real quick?
Yes.
Not to delay on the meeting, because we gotta get going, but, real quick, Mr. Chairman, first is, the letter came in from the Bar Association requesting permission to use the different courts, which seemed pretty formal, but do we need to make a motion or approve it?
We always do, and I think we probably should just put it on next week's meeting to be doubly sure it was not on this agenda.
Okay, okay.
And then we send out to our different courts.
Courts, let them know, okay.
It's Quincy and Dedham.
Yep. Another one, as a follow-up, I remember we had a letter from a resident?
Quick question, quick question, you said part of that's in Quincy, so it doesn't have, we have to go back to the state?
Oh. Quincy District Court.
Yeah, so for the Quincy District Court, I would suggest that we reach out to the state just to tell them this has been requested, it's always been done in the past.
I can't imagine that there's an issue, but it's a very good point, because for probably fifty years, they've been just sending it here because we own Quincy District Court.
But one, but one in particular, August thirteenth, who knows at that point what might be happening? You know, next year, yeah, there, but August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
If there isn't a court there.
That's what I'm saying, you know, so maybe this might be, yeah, that's why I wanted.
We'll, we'll be happy to circle back and inform them what's going on.
Okay, safety issue, we talked about this, I wonder if there's any feedback we got from our engineers, or John McGowan, or both, or anybody? We talked about pedestrian crossing and getting signage out there, so that would help mitigate some of the traffic and make it safer for people crossing, any follow-up on that so far?
Dedham, the town of Dedham reached back to me and made remarks that each crossing signal would cost, I think, thirty-two thousand dollars. I'd asked for signal, signalized or strobed alerts for each of the three crosswalks. Leon was politely saying, that's a lot, I have not heard back from him since I politely indicated that the one in front superior seems to be the most traveled. So I'll be happy to follow up with Leon to see if they are progressing, it's a Dedham property, and so they're the ones that have to pay for the improvement.
Gotcha, okay, so just politely, that could be a possible ARPA funding, if we get some extra money or money left over, something that.
Would have to probably fit under revenue loss, and I don't really know where Dedham is, but.
Well, no, like, a couple of towns did community improvement, there was one town in particular, it was in Walpole, did, they did a new center improvement for public safety, that would be, that could be, you know, this is worth a look. If there's a chance to get some funding.
I'll circle back and find out where they're at with it, it's the time of the season, as you know, Commissioner, for town meetings, and for all I know, Dedham's waiting for approval of funding from their town, but I'll find out what he's thinking.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's important to keep, keep our eye on that, I can't imagine all signalization is expensive, and, you know, it's gotta be done right, because it's such a key spot here. You know, a lot of folks using their facilities and running across and back and forth.
Maybe if we just started with one.
I know.
Just, you know, get the one side.
Okay.
Yeah.
Number eighteen, emergency items, any other topic reasonably anticipate would be discussed, I have none. We'll refer the Bar Association lead up to the states about Quincy Court, and then we'll put that on our future agenda, get that out of here. We have no, nothing, okay, before we adjourn, I want you to keep in your thoughts and prayers, Marion Rizzo of Canton, who is, has deceased last week, she was the mother-in-law of our county director, John Cronin. And we want everyone to think and keep in your thoughts, Marion, as we adjourn this meeting.
At least she had the benefit of thirty-eight nuns of the Benedictine Order Party for us, well.
That's probably more powerful than prayers that come from this board, but you never know.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I was gonna say, I'm very pleased, more than ever, that we're, we're helping out the Alzheimer Foundation, so.
It's, it's a home run.
Yeah.
They are related.